Okay, so we are... Essentially, this is not a new topic. We started talking about the nature of God some time back, but then we sort of took a detour to discuss other issues. And now we're sort of coming back to this topic, the nature of God. Why is it important to understand God's nature? You see, the views that we hold about God, those views shape our relationship with Him and determine how we approach Him. Our relationship with God determines how we experience His love, and grace, and power. If we deem God to be mean, we will find it hard to have an intimate relationship with Him. We will find it hard to believe we will receive the things we ask from Him. God... Okay, now before I come to that, let me just comment on these few statements. God is God. He is who He is. He has an unchanging nature. But God is so wonderful that He has that ability to respond to you. In fact, He created us in such a way, and He also created each one of us to be different on purpose, so that each one of us may evoke in Him the different attributes that He has. There's a certain personality assessment tool called the Myers-Briggs. Great inventory. And this particular tool helps to pick up the different characteristics that we all possess. And it grows people into feelers and thinkers. It grips people into intuitives and sensing types. I'm not going to bore you with all the technicalities, but what I will just say today is that people who are thinkers, their attention is on something else than people who are feelers. When you talk to a thinker, when you communicate with a thinker, he is more interested in the accuracy of what you're saying. If you stray from the point, the thinker will pick it up very, very quickly, because he's focusing on your words, he's focusing on accuracy. But when you communicate with a feeler, he's not focusing so much on the words and accuracy. He's looking for a general impression. He's looking at the connection that he has with you and with what you're saying. So feelers relate to other people differently, and thinkers relate to people differently. If you come into contact with thinkers, you might think that they are critical people. You might think that they are fault-finding. But sometimes, all it is is they are just focusing on detail. Whereas the feelers are the ones that you might connect with easily, because they can overlook detail whilst they look at the bigger picture, or they focus more on the connection that they have with you. God made us like that. He made each person to be different and to therefore place a different kind of demand on him. What do I mean by that? When David bows the knee to pray to God, he places a different kind of demand on God than when Samuel does. Or this is the passage, let me see, when David... His relationship with God was different from Samuel's. Different from Daniel's. Daniel was a wonderful man of God. But when you read the book of Daniel, you won't find much there that is to do with his emotional connection with God. Yet Daniel was so highly valued by God that in fact, God boasts about Daniel, he boasts about Samuel. He boasts about... There are certain men of God that in the Old Testament that God boasts, pardon me, about, including Abraham, of course. But these men are all different. David, you could tell he was a feeler. You read the Psalms, and David talks about his feelings for God. "What's the dear pants for the water? So my soul..." "...pants after thee?" You won't come across Daniel writing something like that in the Bible. You read John's letters, his epistles, they are all about love, 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 love. The apostle who leaned on Jesus' chest just to hear what he had to say. Very different. God made each one of us different. Why? Because He is so big, He needed children who would draw different attributes out of him. So when this child of his is just focusing on knowledge, "Lord, give me more knowledge", he pours it out. And when this other child says, "Affection, affection", he pours it out. Whatever it is that you desire, whatever it is that makes you place a demand on Him, He will meet that demand with a supply. That is God. He is filled with the fullness in life. Anything that is needed in life is found in Him. That's why the Bible says that, "Open your mouth wide", and I will fail it. Can you think of... Can anybody say something like that? It's like somebody saying, "Here is a blank chequebook. Write yourself any amount." Nobody can do that, because the richest man on earth, his money is still finite. It's still finite. Nobody owns 1 trillion. Nobody on the planet owns 1 trillion. Nobody even has half a trillion. Nobody. They just don't have it. They are rich, but they don't have it, the amount. God says, "Open your mouth wide". In other words, there is no demand that you can place on God that He will not be able to meet. He is bottomless, infinite or infinite, in all His ways. There is... I mean, you cannot fathom God. So that is God. And with all His infinite power, might, love, grace, compassion, etc. There's something very interesting about God. He will be to you whatever you deem Him to be. Of course, within, with some exceptions. If you expect Him to be an evil person, doesn't mean He's going to be an evil person. But if you... I think I'm not sharing, actually. Or am I sharing? Let's see. So it doesn't mean that you can get God to do something that's not in His nature to do. But of the things that are in His nature to do, whatever it is that you deem Him to be capable of doing, that's what He can do with your life. And that's what He will do. Many years ago, I was talking to a guy, I was trying to witness to him about Christ. And yeah, he wasn't really buying the message. So I was telling him about, you know, God's power, God's mind, what God can do, and that God can heal. And he said that, well, as far as he is concerned, if he's ill, you know, and unless it's a serious illness, then he's not going to be, you know, troubling God with those kind of issues. He's just going to go and get medicine, and then he'll take it, and he doesn't need God to do those kind of things. It's only when he really has maybe an incurable disease, then he has a reason to go to God. Very, very, very logical. Very logical. And you will find that many, many people in the West think that way. The problem is, if you've not been exercising your faith in the small things, if you've not been exercising your faith when it comes to headache and fever, the day the doctor gives you some horrible diagnosis, how are you going to exercise your faith? Of course, God can heal both the minor disease and the bigger disease, so to speak, or the more serious one. But the question is not what God can do. The question is what you can believe Him to do. What will your faith still stand when you get that diagnosis? Or will you stand firm? Will you stand firm or will you waver? If you have been building your faith bit by bit, each time something small happens, it's not because there's no paracetamol in the cardboard. It's not because we don't have... It's not because the doctor is not one telephone call away. It's because you are building your faith for the future, so that when the bigger trouble comes, you won't panic. You'll see, "I know He did it for me in the smaller issues, therefore He will do it for me now." You remember the story of David? When he heard about, you know, when he went to the Israelite camp, and they were all, you know, they had pitched camp, and I think it was the Valley of Elah, and you had, what's his name, Goliath, and the Philistines on one hand, and the Israelites on the other. And Goliath essentially abusing them and mocking them. When David came and saw that situation, he said, "Who is this unsanctioned Philistine that he should defy the armies of God?" His big brothers, the ones that looked like warriors. Remember that Samuel looked at the eldest of David's brothers and thought, "Ah, this one is truly the anointed of God. He looked like a proper warrior." He was there. He was only trembling before the Philistine. And this small boy came and said, "Who is this unsanctioned Philistine that he should be defying the armies of God?" Where did he get that faith from? Where did he get that perspective from? So easy to find out. When David was brought before Saul, Saul asked him that same question, said, "Look, that guy is a warrior, and he is about maybe six times your size. He has been doing this stuff for years. You've only just come here from your, you know, from keeping your father's sheep. How are you going to defeat this guy?" He said, "Don't worry." Whilst I was looking after the sheep, the lions would come to try and grab the sheep. And I said, "No way." The bears would come. I said, "No way." With the power of God, I opened the mouth of these lions and took the sheep out. The same God who kept me whilst I was looking after the sheep will also help me defeat the Philistine. You see how faith works? Because whilst he was in the field with the animals, doing something that was totally unspiritual, he exercised his faith. Therefore, when the big battle came, he was battle-ready. You will not become battle-ready avoiding every battle. That's not how you grow battle-ready. You will not become strong dodging every opportunity to be strong. It's by... The devil in those small issues, telling him, "My body, you have no part of parcel in this body. In the temple of the Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit doesn't need diseases or illnesses. Of my body, resist them", the Bible says, "and He will flee from you." It's in taking this stance, it's this approach, that you'll be able to chase the enemy away, and you build your faith, so that when the bigger problem comes, you are ready. God will be to you whatsoever, whatever you think He is. If you think He's only capable of small, small defeats, that's where you're going to be. That's how, that's what your experience of God is going to be. But if you think He can do great things, that's what you will also see in your life. Except that to get from the small things to the great things, there is a path to take. There is a process to undergo. You're unwavering in those situations, and that's how you grow your faith. God is the great I Am. He is who He is. You and I can't change Him. We can't change His identity. He is who He is. He says, "Open your mouth wide", and I'll fail it. The question is, how wide can you open your mouth? What does it mean to open your mouth? It's about your faith. It's about your faith. Years ago, I didn't understand this, you know, sometimes you'd go to a prayer meeting, and then some of these vast passages would be quoted, "Open your mouth wide", and then I used to just think it was just a case of, you know, expectation. No, it's about your faith. Without faith, it's impossible to please God. It's faith that places a demand on God. So it's by God makes His provision by grace, and we respond with faith. It's faith that will enable you to tap into the grace of God. Now, God is spirit, or He's a spirit. In other words, He's not flesh and blood. In Dorum, chapter 4, verse 24, Jesus, in His discourse with the women of the world, the Samaritan women of the world, He said, "God is spirit, and those who worship Him must worship Him in spirit and in truth." God is not flesh and blood. He is spirit, a thing that is very clear to all of us. God is omnipresent. In other words, He is present everywhere. He is not restricted to time and place. It's very important to understand that only God is omnipresent. The devil is not omnipresent. You know, almost every African Christian fights the devil. There's only one devil. There's only one devil. In one of the letters to the seven churches in the book of Revelation, Revelation, chapter 2, chapters 2 and 3, Jesus sends messages to the seven churches. And I've forgotten exactly which church it was, whether it was Titara or whether it was Sidious. But one of the churches, Jesus said, "I know where you dwell", which is where Satan dwells. He didn't say that about any of the other churches, because Satan is not omnipresent. He's a fallen angel, and angels are not omnipresent. We'll be talking about angels, you know, and that was also one of the questions posed by Irene. We are preparing some material about angels, so we'll be talking about that soon. Angels travel. In the book of Daniel, the angel Gabriel was sent, and he traveled, and it took him some time, and he was even stopped on the way. Angels are not omnipresent. They can be even stopped. But God cannot be stopped. He is everywhere. In Psalm 139, verses 7 to 10, it says, "Where can I go from your spirit? Or where can I flee from your presence? If I ascend into heaven, you are there. If I make my bed in hell, behold, you are there. If I take the wings of the morning and dwell in the utmost part of the sea, even there, your hand shall lead me; and your right hand shall hold me." God is everywhere. He is a spirit. And because He's spirit, He even knows what you think. You know, years ago, I remember that somebody was teaching about prayer, or talking about prayer, and said that, you know, it's not prayer unless you vocalize it, unless you verbalize it, it's not prayer. And I thought, that can't be right. Imagine being a prisoner, you know, chained between two soldiers, and being told to keep quiet. How do you pray? Of course, you can pray in your thoughts. He is spirit. He discerns thoughts. I don't know about you, but sometimes you think a wrong thought, and immediately you get a rebuke in your thoughts. God is spirit. And because He's spirit, He discerns your thoughts. In fact, I think we still shared with us, you know, some time back, a few months back, about how God is able to do more than you can think. That means He discerns thoughts. There are prayers that I never go around to making. God just made the provision because He discerned my thoughts. He is spirit, and the more you understand that God is spirit, He sets you free from ritualistic Christianity. What do I mean? Ritualistic Christianity is, "Oh, we have to pray. Okay, then let's pray. We have to read the Bible." There's no flexibility. There's no understanding that God is spirit. You have to go through this ritual, then go through this process, then you go to the... God is spirit. He discerns your thoughts. Commune with Him in your thoughts, in your spirit. God is uncreated. He existed before creation. Isaiah, chapter 40, verse 28, "Have you not known? Have you not heard? The Lord is the everlasting God, the creator of the ends of the earth. He does not faint or grow weary. His understanding is unsearchable. Before the mountains were brought forth, or ever you had formed the earth and the world, from everlasting to everlasting, you are God." It says from everlasting to everlasting. In other words, talking about eternity before time began, and eternity after time has ended. He has no beginning and He has no end. He is continuous across time, and before and after time. He is uncreated. Nobody created Him. He's the self-existing one. Thus says the Lord, "The King of Israel and his Redeemer, the Lord of hosts, I am the first, and I am the last, and there is no God besides me." Isaiah, chapter 44, verse 6. You will find the same verse in Revelation, chapter 1, verse 8. Every created being requires something or someone else to sustain them. Every created being requires something or someone else to sustain them. But God is uncreated, and does not need anything or anyone to sustain Him. He doesn't eat. He doesn't need to refresh himself. He doesn't need to regenerate His strength. He is the one that actually sustains everything. He abhors all things by the word of His power. It is said that there is enough power in a slice of bread to power, you know, a nuclear-powered ship around the world. Enough power in a slice of bread through nuclear power in a slice of bread. Where is it? It's hidden in the atoms. The tiny atoms that are invisible to the human eye, or the components of the atom are held together by incredible force that when that force is released, it can generate electricity for maybe an entire city. That's what... But ask yourself the simple question, where did that power come? Why should there even be that kind of force within an atom? Because if that power was just let go, and you ate the slice of bread, it would blow you apart. But something holds the atoms together, I mean, the components of the atom together, to stop it from exploding. He abhors all things by the power of His word. God is the one sustaining everything. God has life in Himself, and He is self-perpetuating. Your life comes from somewhere. My life comes from somewhere. My life comes from my parents, but really comes from God. When God created Adam, He initiated a process, which process has not continued up to today, life being passed on from one person to another. But He started with God imparting His spirit into Adam's body, because life itself, the thing that you call life, is inside God. And it's because He released it that you ended up with animate things around you. When you go to the planet Earth, you won't find living things there. At least, nobody's discovered any living things there so far, because God hasn't breathed into the inanimate matter over there to bring life into it. The life is in Him. And it's only in places and in things that He He breathes, those things where He channels His life, that's where life appears. There's life on this planet because He channeled His spirit. He channeled the life inside Him into this planet. That's why there's life here. God is the source of all life. Now, this is the tricky part. God is one. So we say God is one, but at the same time, amongst Christians, you will come across the concept of the Holy Trinity, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. I don't know about you, but to me, that's three. Yet Christians say, "God is one." And when you open the Bible, it says, "Here, O Israel, the Lord is one God." How can God be one and three at the same time? Muslims often ask, "How can you say that 1 plus 1 plus 1 equals 1?" That's one of their favorite questions. Now, like many of you, I've grappled with this question for a long time. And I'll say that for the vast majority of my Christian life, I didn't understand the Holy Trinity. I just accepted it, believed it, but I didn't understand it so that I could explain it to another person. And increasingly, I find that most, many Christians are in exactly the same shoe. They kind of believe and accept it, but they are not able to explain it. Now, I've battled with this for many years. And I probably shared with you some time back how that I was studying many years ago, when I was in medical school, first year, or second, or first year, second year. I was studying, and it was when the Lord started to interact with my study time. One day, I was studying cell biology, and the Lord just used the cell biology to explain the Holy Trinity to me. So to me, I have got some understanding. And then, of course, over the years, I've built upon it to increase my knowledge and understanding. I didn't fully understand it when it was initially revealed to me, but I have sort of grown in understanding over the years. So what I'm going to share with you is what the Lord has shared with me and helped me to understand. I am not saying this is the only way to understand the Holy Trinity, or that this is the way. It is how it has helped me to make sense of 1 plus 1 plus 1 equals 1. Now, before we do that, we're going to do a quick lesson in human biology, just a short lesson. On the left, you've got two images. On the left, you've got the image of an amoeba. Amoeba is a unicellular organism, so it is just a a tiny animal, if you like, that is just made up of one cell. It's microscopic. You can see it. It's like, say, virus or bacteria or something like that. That's what an amoeba is. But on the others here, you've got another unicellular or a single cell that has many of the features or similar features as to this one here. But do you know where this one is found? You can find that somewhere in any part of the body, or you can find it in the blood as well. It's called a macrophage cell, this cell here. And it behaves very similarly to this one. Now, when an amoeba wants to eat, what it does is, it stretches its membrane. So it's covered by a thin membrane. It stretches it, forms a balloon around the object that it wants to engulf, that it wants to eat. And then in that way, that object ends up inside the amoeba. That's how it eats. Well, guess what? When the macrophage wants to eat, it does exactly the same thing. And yes, the macrophage eats. It's a cell inside your body. It's not a virus, or it's not a foreign body. Your body produced this. Millions of them. And it's not the only type of cell that behaves like that. There are other cells within your bloodstream that behave like that. This cell goes about looking for bacteria and other pathogens to kill, to destroy. And if you find something, it will engulf it. The way the amoeba engulfs stuff. And yet, your body produced it. This macrophage has a nucleus which has your DNA in it. The DNA inside you that made you you, it's found here. Because the amoeba has its own... genetic material as well. What am I saying? Your body has the capacity to produce a cell that behaves like an independent organism. Even though this thing is inside your body. But it gets more interesting than that. When you go to the blood bank and then you give blood, it takes some of the blood. Cells that behave like the macrophage will be found in the blood. Because the macrophage is part of what we call white blood cells. You know, it's a specialized one. And it will be inside there. When you walk away from the blood bank, from the hospital and you come back home, you've left a part of you in that hospital. That part of you consists of some cells that behave like separate organisms. But you are still complete. You are still you, you walked away, part of you has remained in the hospital, but you are so complete, nobody will look at you and say, oh, you are crazy minus one pint of blood. Or you are araba minus one pint of blood, nobody would even know that you gave blood. You've given your DNA, you've given your cells that behave like organisms and yet you are still complete. The Bible says that God made us in his image and likeness. In other words, he made us to be like him. And to be like him means that there are many similarities between us and God. And there's a passage in Romans, chapter one, that tells us that the invisible things of God, even the Trinity, the Godhead, can be understood by observing nature, creation, in this case, the human body. So there are similarities, there are lessons that you can learn by observing the human body that will help you understand God's nature. So where does the Trinity come in? The way I understand it is that the Bible teaches us that God is the Father, the source. When you read the Bible very often, when you're talking about God, you just be referring to the Father. And then you wonder, okay, but people say Jesus is also God. Where does Jesus come into the picture? Imagine God. Eh? For a few, for a brief moment, imagine God being like you. And producing a cell like this, producing a cell that is Jesus. And that cell having all the features of God. So that it's identical with the Father, there's nothing, no difference between the Father. The Father remains the Father, he has lost nothing. It's you, even though you left a pint of blood in the hospital, you are still you. The Father has lost nothing. But the Son is full. Complete, just like the Father. Now imagine this thing happening in eternity. There's no time. It's just something that happened, again, I say imagine. Because I don't want you to think that about Jesus's beginning. I don't want you to think of Jesus, you know, imagine it in eternity. That's how you end up with Father and Son. And the Holy Spirit, I mean, in, in the same sort of way. So in the end, you have three beings, you have three persons, sorry, equal possessing the same qualities, able to do the same things, the same life. And here's the interesting thing. When one speaks, he speaks on behalf of all three. And when now one speaks, he doesn't have to say we, he simply says I. When Jesus was talking about the Father, John, chapter fourteen, you know, between John, chapter fourteen and John, chapter sixteen, Jesus started telling his disciples about his relationship with his Father and the Holy Spirit. And when he started talking about the Father, Philip just said, you know what, just show us the Father and that will suffice us. You know, we just want the Father, Jesus said, I've been with you so, for so long and you haven't known the Father, don't you know that the Father is in me? As far as Jesus was concerned, whereas he was on earth, there was no need for the Father to be there. Because he was there, the Father was there. The Father is in the Son. There is no difference between the two of them in substance, in essence, everything that is in the Father is in the Son. So when you see the Son, you don't say, oh, yeah, but I want to see the Father, no, when you see the Son, you've seen the Father, everything is there. So this is the foundation upon which to, to try and understand the Holy Trinity. Now let's go and go, let's try and go through some of the slides. So we say God is in three persons. And the Bible shows that there is, you know, the Bible gives us evidence or proof of plurality, plurality. Many people struggle with it, Jews, especially Orthodox Jews, struggle with this. Even though it's there in their Bible, clear in the Old Testament, they struggle with it. Let's read some of the passages. This one is taken from Genesis one, verse sixteen, it says, let us make man in our image put into our likeness. Let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the birds of the air, and over the cattle, over all the earth, and, and over all creeping things that creep in the air, on the earth. So look, this, the, the, the Lord says, let us make man. Who was he talking to? Was he talking to himself? Alone in heaven, and then he said, let us make man? Was he talking to angels? Some people, that's what, you know, some people say that he was talking to angels. That he was, you know, he was just talking to angels, fine. The question is, if you say that he was talking to an, to angels, then you're also suggesting that he made us in the image of angels, because he said, let's make them in our image. But we are not made in the image of angels, nowhere in the Bible are we told that we are made in the image of angels. So we are not made in the image of angels, we are made in the image of God. Therefore, whoever God was talking to had to be God as well. Otherwise, how could he say, let's make in our image? Clearly, he was talking to the Father and the Son when he said, let's make man in our image and our likeness. Next passage, in the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth, the earth was without form and void, and darkness was on the face of the deep. And the spirit of God was hovering over the face of the waters. Then God said, let there be light, and there was light. Genesis, chapter one, verse one, two, three. God spoke while his spirit hovered above the waters, the question is, who's the spirit? Is he the same as God? Why does the passage say, God spoke, the spirit was hovering? Unless, of course, there was God, with the Father, and then there was spirit. More proof. After Adam and Eve had eaten the forbidden fruit, the Lord said, behold, the man has become like one of us, knowing good and evil. And now he might stretch out his hand and take also from the tree of life and eat and live forever, Genesis, chapter three, verse twenty two. Question is, who was the Lord referring to when he said, man has become like one of us? Of course, it couldn't have been angels. It had to be the Father, it had to be the Son and the Holy Spirit. And Babel, you know, when the Tower of Babel was built, or when they started building it, the Lord said, come, let us go down and there confuse their language so that they will not understand one another's speech. Again, who was he talking to? Said, let us go down. Can you imagine God talking to angels that way? When you go and read, there's nowhere in the Bible where you find angels being spoken to that way, let's, oh, let's do something together, no. They are ministering spirits, they are servants, God, they are, they are not talked to like this. They are given instructions on what to do. But here, God is urging somebody who is like him, let's go. In the book of Isaiah, the Lord declares, whom shall I send and who will go for us? This was when God was sending Isaiah out because he had so many grievances against Israel and he was looking for someone to speak on his behalf. But he said us. You're like, why us? Why don't you, who will go for me? He was not, he was speaking to the three in one in the presence of Isaiah. And Isaiah said, send me. So hopefully you are beginning to get how that God is both one and also three, three in one. Let's look at some similarities between God and man, because I made a statement that God made us in his image and that we can, you can observe God, or rather, you can observe man and learn about God's attributes. God is an intelligent being and God made us also to be intelligent beings. God is a moral agent, he knows right from wrong, so is man. God has a will, man has a will. God experiences emotions, so do we. God has aspirations, a purpose, he has desires. So do we. God exists as three distinct persons. Man is made of three distinct parts, spirit, soul and body. At creation, the Lord said, let us make man in our image. He made us like him, or he made us to be like himself. Now let's go through some scriptures that help to buttress the points that I made with this imagery, okay? In John, chapter eight, verse forty two, Jesus said, if God were your father, he was speaking to the religious Jews, if God were your father, you would love me, for I proceeded forth and came from God. Nor have I come of myself, but he sent me. Note, note two statements there, or, or phrases there. Proceeded forth and came of God, you're like, why? I came from God. I came from God. Proceeded forth and came from God. When I went and searched the meaning of the proceeded for the word that was used in the Greek, it's like, let's say, I, you know, I'm at home right now, but let's say I went to the supermarket. And then I met someone there and I said to him, I left my home to come to the supermarket. That's exactly what he's saying here. I left my home to come to the supermarket. Now, in this case, Jesus is the, the home bit. The place where he, he was before he came to us was his father. He came from his father. Now you might understand it figuratively as him saying that he sent us, I mean, that he was sent by his father, which would be correct. But when you go and read, when you go and check the meaning, you'll discover that it's talking about to emanate, the way like something is emitted from something, he proceeded forth, he came from within his father. As it were, and then came to us. Jesus is the only begotten son of the Father. People struggle with that, so they try to find different explanations for the word begotten, but begotten is just begotten. When you beget, it means you give birth to. The Bible says that we ourselves were begotten of the Father. That Jesus may be the first among many brethren. So they say, he, he, if we, if we came from the Father, if he begot us with his spirit, if he begot Christ, I don't fully understand that. But that's how it helps me to understand the Trinity. Okay, Jesus is the express image of the Father or the exact representation of his father, you know, I explained, I said, he imagined a cell that is exactly the same has all the features of every other cell, let's say, you know, let's say one cell divides into two. And then the two cells have exactly the same features. That's what Jesus was like. God, who at various times and in various ways spoke in times past to the fathers by the prophets, has in these last days spoken to us by his Son, whom he has appointed heir of all things, through whom also he made the worlds, who being the brightness of his glory and the express image of his person. Jesus is the express image of his persons, or the exact representation, he's like carbon copy. It's that representation of his father. So we have the Holy Trinity, Trinity. And within the Holy Trinity, there are different roles. All three persons in the Trinity were involved in creation. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth, the earth was without form and void, and darkness was on the face of the deep. And the spirit of God was hovering over the wa, the face of the waters. Then God said, let there be light, and there was light, Genesis, chapter one, verse one, two, three. See at creation, God, the Father spoke while the spirit hovered above the waters. You one could argue that God, the Son, was the word that was spoken, since nothing was made without a son. The standouts we discover, we study further, we discover, he is the organizing principle within all of God's creation. And the spirit is the one that gives life. Just as the different parts of man, spirit, soul and body have different functions, so also the Holy Spirit, the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit have different roles. All three persons of the Godhead were involved in Israel's deliverance from captivity. Jesus was the rock from which the people drank and God's spirit remained amongst the people. Haggai, chapter two, verse five, according to the word that I covenanted with you when you came out of Egypt, so my spirit remains among you, do not fear. In Nehemiah, it talks about the spirit of the Lord being their teacher as they walked through the wilderness. God, you see, it, it, these things were all there, the Trinity was there all throughout the Old Testament, but it was almost hidden from view. The people could not see it. But when Christ came and he revealed the person of the Father, his disciples could then go back and say, ah, now we get it. And he passed on that knowledge down to us. All three persons of the Trinity have been interacting with creation right from the beginning. John, chapter one, verse ten, he was in the world and the world was made through him. And the world did not know him. Referring to Jesus, he was in the world. He's talking about before Jesus was born and became human, he was already in the world. True, he was here because he was spirit, he became flesh for our sake, but he was already here, he was the spirit, he was in spirit form. But the world did not know him. The Father is the source of all things. Bible says, there is but one God, the Father from whom all things came and for, and for whom we live. And there is but one Lord, Jesus Christ, through whom all things came and through whom we live. Have you seen the change of language that they use, the, the very careful choice of words here? First of all, Paul makes it First of all, Paul makes it clear. First Corinthians chapter eight, verse six, there is a Father and there is Jesus Christ who is the Lord. In almost all of Paul's letters, we will talk about greetings from the Father and from the Son. And he says, the Father is the one from whom, the originator, the source, the idea. I believe that when, when, when God said, let us make man, it was the Father speaking, let us make man. It, his originator is from whom the order, the ideas come from. And he says, from whom all things came and for whom we live. But there's one Lord, the one that has been put in charge of all things for the sake of the Father. And, and then he changes the language for, you know, when he's talking about the Father, he says, from whom. When he gets to the Son, what does he say? Through whom. You see now, the Son is the medium through which God achieves his purposes. But the original idea, the source, all things came through the Son. That's why Jesus could tell people, I am the way. In other words, the conduit, the portal, the means of getting to the Father. The source. Blessed be God, blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us in Christ with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly place. You see, Paul writing to the Ephesians, this is from Ephesians chapter one, verse three, could have simply said blessed be the Lord Jesus Christ who has blessed all things. And that would also be accurate because all things that belong to the Father have been given to the Son. But he wanted us to understand that it all originates with the Father. When it comes to salvation, where did it begin? It began, it began with the Father. It says, for God so loved the world that he gave his one and only Son. Only the Father has a son. So is the Father is referring to when he said, God so loved the world. He gave his only son, that whoever believes in him should not perish but have eternal life. John three sixty. Now let's describe the Son. Jesus, who is Jesus? He is the Son who came forth from the Father. And I described, I used the analogy of the Father being the place from which the Son proceeded and came to us. When the Bible describes Jesus re-entering heaven, it says, he went and sat at the right hand of God the Father. And the Bible is very precise in saying that he went and sat at the right hand. Why didn't he just tell us that he went to heaven to be with his Father? Before he came, he was in his Father's bosom. God has no man seen, but the only begotten son who was in the bosom of the Father, as he revealed. So God has removed the son that's in his bosom, that's revealed to us, him to us, that the son may reveal the father. So it's a mutual thing. The son, the father revealed the son to us, the son revealed the father to us by his conduct. So before he came to the earth, he was in his father's bosom. After he returned, seated at the right hand of the Father. And it's the right hand because he's been exalted through a position of authority. That's why specific right hand is mentioned. That takes us to a certain concept of essence versus rank. God's essence, God's nature. As I explained, it's like when you have a cell and the cell is divided into two and those two cells, daughter cells are identical, have exactly the same features. Jesus and the Father are identical in essence. Jesus doesn't lack anything that a father has. It pleased the father that in him should all the fullness dwell. So Jesus has the fullness of his father. But he doesn't have the rank of his father. When Paul wrote to the Ephesians about marriage and he said, wives, wives submit to your husband. Christ submits to his father. In essence, Christ is the same. Nature qualities, the same. That's why Jesus could say, if you've seen me, you've seen the Father. There's no difference between the two of us. In essence, they're saying. But in rank, no, one submits to the other. So when Paul wrote to wives, saying submit, it was not because the wife is of a different material or inferior material. Marriage is a picture of something much greater. The son submits to the father. Because the father is the head of the family. The first, the husband is the head of the wife. So Christ admits to his father. But after he died, resurrected, indeed, he accomplished everything. It's like, when Adam sinned in the garden, it was like God's plan had just gone to port. Then his son came down, the one that had the same nature as the father. Ephesians chapter two talks about it. He said that, he did not counted robbery to be equal with God. It's a poor translation. Really, what he's saying is equality with God was not something to be grasped because he was already God. He was, he was in every essence, in his essence. He was not inferior. It's another way of saying it. He was not inferior to God in any way and therefore had every right to say, you know what? If those people did rescue, why don't you go? Why, 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 why me? He humbled himself to the position of a servant. He came to the earth to save you and to put his father's plan back on track. So the father exalted him high above all that name. Takes us to the subject of name, but we won't have time for it today. That the name of Jesus, the mention of the name of which all things in heaven and on earth should. You know that in the Old Testament, the name that put fear in people was Yahweh or Jehovah or Jehovah. But in the New Testament, you go and search for it. Yahweh is no mentioned. Of course, it's the Greek, so it won't be mentioned. Curious is the, is the, is the equivalent. But in the New Testament, whenever a name is being exalted, do you know the name that is exalted? Jesus. God has given him a name. That name has become so special, even in heaven, even though the Father is the Father, it's not the Father's name that now causes people to tremble. When you're casting out demons, don't cast out demons in the name of Jehovah. You might be wasting your time. That is the name that makes demons tremble. And you know what? Because Jesus has been exalted to the right hand of the Father, far above every principality and power. There is no name given in the heaven by which we must be, might be saved. There is no name demons tremble at that name. Diseases fade away at the mention of that name. It is mentioned with faith. The name. So we're talking about who is Jesus? He is the exalted Son of God, the Son of God who is in the very, who was in the very image of the Father even before he came to the earth. But then humbled himself to take upon himself the nature of man. And because he did that, God has exalted him far above all principalities and powers. The mention of his name, demons should tremble. Jesus is the only begotten of the Father, the begotten son of the Father. Of course, no longer the only begotten son. He was the only begotten son of the Father. Again, it's something that people are a little bit afraid to say. He was the only begotten son of the Father, but he's not the only begotten son of the Father because we are all begotten of God now. So that he may be the first amongst many brethren. How God has exalted us. This is one of the things that is why it pains me when believers, we treat ourselves like we are ordinary people that were just saved by grace. It's like, okay, okay, if we're going to hell, okay, we'll just bring you, can just come to heaven. Okay, fine. No, you are not just somebody that was just forgiven so you might go to heaven as some beggarly person. You were exalted to the position of the child of God, so that Christ may be your elder brother. When that revelation hits you, eh? There are many problems that are chasing you around, that you will turn around and chase those problems away. Jesus was inside his father before creation began. And at some point, God decided to reveal his Son to the world. Jesus said, no one has seen God at any time, the only begotten son who is in the bosom of the Father. He has declared him. I believe that he was inside his father, then at some point he was in, in the bosom of the father and then at some point he was declared to the world by coming to the earth. Okay, I think we've covered this already. Jesus is like his father in every way. Philip said to Jesus, Lord, show us the Father and it is sufficient for us. Jesus said to him, have I been with you so long and yet you have not known me, Philip? He who has seen me has seen the Father. So how can you say, show us the Father? Do you not believe that I am in the Father and the Father in me? The words that I speak to you, I do not speak on my own authority, but the Father who dwells in me does the works. John fourteen, verses nine to ten. Jesus had the fullness of the Godhead. Colossians two, nine to ten says, for in him dwells all the fullness of the Godhead bodily. Godhead simply is the Trinity and you are complete in him. You see, as soon as it talks about the completeness in Christ, next thing is, talks about you. You are complete in him, who is the head of all principality and power. So he is the head of all principality and power, but you are complete where? In him. When Jesus was exalted far above all principality and power, he did, what, it doesn't happen for his sake because he was already God. Before he came to the earth, no demons could withstand him. When he entered the synagogue, they said, what have you come here to do? What have you come to do with us? Have you come to torment us before the time? That was before his death and resurrection. He already had authority over the demons. But for your sake, for my sake, he died, that he might acquire that authority for us. So that when he was exalted, he wasn't exalted for himself, it's for us. So that together with him, we are seated in heavenly places. So we are complete in him. Okay, let's see how we're doing for time. Think we'll be running up. Next is the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit is a person, not a force. Bible says, and do not grieve the Holy Spirit of God with whom you were sealed for the day of redemption. Ephesians four twenty. You, how can you grieve somebody? Or how can you grieve somebody that is not a person? Some people say the Holy Spirit is a force. No, Holy Spirit is a person. Why has Satan filled with your, filled your heart to lie to the Holy Spirit? You have not lied to men but to God, except the five, verses three and four. These, these were the words of Peter to Ananias. Remember the story of Ananias and Sapphira when they lied? He said, you have lied to the Holy Spirit. How can you lie to a force? The Holy Spirit is a person. There's another passage in the, in the book of Acts. They went through the region of Phrygia and Galatia, having been forbidden by the Holy Spirit to speak the word in Asia. And when they had come up to Messia, they attempted to go into Bithynia, but the Holy Spirit, sorry, but the spirit of Jesus did not allow them. It's very interesting that it changes from the Holy Spirit to the spirit of Jesus. It just goes to show you how that in essence, they are the same, so that all of us were using the phrases interchangeably. For the Spirit searches everything, even the depths of God, for who knows a person's thoughts except the spirit of that person which is in him? So also no one comprehends the thought of God except the spirit of God. Very interesting one. Look at this, the, the parallel that Paul is drawing between you and your spirit and God and his spirit. Now I was telling you about the similarities between us and God. Paul says, as only your spirit knows what's in you, so God's spirit knows what's inside God, which means God's spirit is, is different from God, like the Father. Because whenever the Bible uses God in the generic term, in the New Testament, referring to the Father. For the Spirit searches everything, even the deep things or the depths of God. So the depths of the Father, the Spirit searches the Father. Because no one knows the thoughts of a person's thought except the spirit of that person. So just as your spirit knows your deepest thoughts, the Holy Spirit knows the deepest thoughts of the Father. And he searches those things and those things that, it's like a way a computer does a set, searches those things that pertain to you, to your life, and then he brings it to you, downloads it to you. That's the blessing that God has given us in the person of the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit came to us from the Father. John fifteen, twenty-six, he says, but when the helper comes, referring to the Holy Spirit, whom I will send to you from the Father, the spirit of truth, who proceeds from the Father, he will bear witness about me. And finally, the Holy Spirit, um, Jesus, Holy Spirit, you know, Jesus is like the Father, the Holy Spirit is like the Father. Jesus referred to the Holy Spirit as another comforter. Why? Because Jesus himself is a comforter. So the Holy Spirit was another comforter. There was no other comforter. There was no need to add the word another. We will dwell on that next week. I think I'm going to stop here. So to recap, we need to understand the nature of God because it is essential to our relationship with him. That as we understand who he is, our relationship with him will improve. We also discovered that the way to receive from God is by faith and that faith must be grown, must be developed. The little challenges that you face in life, if you stand up to those challenges by faith, then the day you face bigger challenges, your faith would have grown and you'd be able to face them squarely. We said that God is big, God is bottomless, and God says, open your mouth wide and I'll fill it. And we said that the way you open your mouth is by faith, by exercising your faith. We explained God is spirit, God is omnipresent, God is uncreated. He doesn't need anything or anybody to sustain him. He's self-sustaining. We didn't get to talk about God's name, but we'll, we'll find time to talk about God's name. We explained God is one and we did a quick lesson in biology, in cell biology, to show, explain how one can understand the Holy Trinity. Please don't take this literally. Please don't take it that I'm saying that God divided himself because I don't know how that process happened. But this is a process that helped me to picture how you could have three persons that are equal or identical in their essence, having different functionalities and being all one, being all, all united. Okay, I think I'll stop here. I suspect that there will be questions. Okay. So have you got any questions? Have you got any observations? Um, this is a big topic. This is the beginning, but please feel free if you have any contributions. So I'm going to come to you. So I'm going to come to you, Arba. This is your topic. So tell me, so far, based on what you've heard. Has something become clearer? Do you have more questions or have I even confused you more than before?
And to be to be honest eh? My mind is full like I don't. I. You know. Yes, I mean, to some extent, but I'm still full. I don't know, I've not been able to grasp fully because. I don't know.
No, 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 but that's good. You you know, you tell tell me where your where the where the, you know, where the problem lies.
Yeah, because I'm. Well, this whole concept of Trinity. I think, um, I don't know, you know, people say that, well, uh, I've heard people say that. It was just them. You know, the Nai Council of Nai See, I mean, it was then that that concept was. It's no, I mean, Trinity is not, no, when the Bible. Okay, what you are saying makes some sense to me like. But I I still, yeah, because so God, um. Jesus came down from heaven.
Yeah.
And that is why my problem is this because. If me, like you said, I live, maybe I I I go and donate blood. Part of me is there, but I. I cannot be in two places myself at the same time.
Yes.
I just like my mind is getting.
Uh, 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 okay, let me, let me try and see the if I understand where the issue lies. So. There is a doctrine, you know, there are people who call themselves Unitarians, who believe that because there is one God. It means that when Jesus came down to the earth, there was no one in heaven. That God was here, therefore there was no one in heaven. And. It's an attempt to try and reconcile with the idea that God is one. But. That doesn't make sense to say that, you know, because Jesus was, he was on earth. He spoke to his father. At some point, he spoke and his father responded with tender and he it it thundered. Or rather, the sound of the of his father, the voice of his father sounded like thunder. The people said, oh, it had thundered. Actually, it was the father responding. To the son. Now, if you're on earth talking to somebody and then you, the person responds from somewhere else, that means there's somebody there. So it's clear that when Jesus came on earth. Heaven wasn't empty. There was someone in heaven called a father and well, he was there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, you know, this, I I I know that. We start from this, I. I need to, you know.
It's the beginning anyways, the beginning, we've only just started.
Uh, yeah, so it's like, I'm not be able to that so. Um. I said, well, you know, this thing of you saying that God is, God is everywhere. And you know, the devil is not omnipresent, okay? And angels are not. So I was thinking this, um. When God said he had come down to Sodom and Gomorrah to see for himself, what is that about? Because. If he's omnipresent, then he should know what is going on. He doesn't need to come down to there to be sure. So that, you know, this angel thing, so you said, talk about that. But was it God who was now wasn't sure what they were saying? Or they didn't write this wall in the Bible because I'm so confused.
But it's a very, very good point that you've raised there. You know, it's a very good point that you've raised. Um, I remember a man of God actually preaching on that topic, and this is what he, this explanation he gave. He said, um. That God is all-knowing. And the Bible talks about how, you know, the spirit of God, the servant spirit of God sent into the whole world, maybe it's kind of referring to the Holy Spirit. But standing to the whole world, God knows everything in the sense that there's nothing hidden from him. It it's a bit like, say, you are in your bedroom or let's say, in a parent is a fire, a mother is in the bedroom and then. Their children are downstairs and the mother hasn't gone downstairs, but knows exactly what they are doing. Because she knows their eh their character, knows the sort of games they play. And they hear, she hears certain noises and she just knows exactly what they are doing. And when she goes downstairs, it's exactly what they are doing. God knows what goes on here. Now, when it comes to Sodom and Gomorrah, I don't believe it's a case of God didn't know. In fact, the Lord himself said that I will go and see whether what's happening there. Is in line with the cry that has got up to me in heaven. In other words. The sins that they were committing there had come to his attention in heaven. But he said, I will go there and see whether it is all together as I have perceived in heaven. You've got to remember that this is Old Testament language. And that and God, in when we're writing the Bible, in inspiring people to write Bible, he inspired them through their culture. Through their language, through their linguistic deficiencies. There were prophets that were more educated than others. Somebody like Jeremiah was a more polished prophet. But the prophets were just prophets were just grabbed from whatever profession they were doing and then giving a message. The language will not be as refined. People will speak according to how they understand. Their limitations would be reflected in the prophecies. In in, um, I think it's in Romans, but. Quotes passages from the Old Testament. He quotes one prophet, then he goes on to say, but Isaiah is bolder. And says this, in other words, God gave the same message to one prophet, but he didn't speak it as clearly as Isaiah did. So even the Old Testament prophecies, they vary according to clarity. Some are much clearer. You go to Daniel's prophecies, they are crisp. You can understand everything. That was not by chance. Daniel was educated. He had the finest education in the finest country in the world at that time. It would be equivalent of going to Harvard University or Oxford. Ram de la Creme. Nebuchadnezzar said, choose me, young man, fine-looking young man and intelligent. And teach them all the knowledge of Babylon. So that they may stand and minister before me. When those people, they were like the chi, the kind, the king's advisors, when they stood before the king. It was not the time to start looking for the right word to say, eh, I am this. No, 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 you got killed for nothing. He asked question, you give him answers. For that to happen, you need that training. So that you can think in a structured way and communicate in a structured way. So when he received his revelations and he started writing, what did he do? Structure. So when you come and you read the whole thing, makes sense, you think it's just a miracle that happened. No. Education. You read Jeremiah's prophecies, makes sense, but go and read some Neohum or some Zephaniah or something, you'll be confused, you'll know where you're going. That's not God though. Limitations of men. But God has chosen to work both through the sharp mind and through the person that will struggle, that is his choice. Because he communicates differently to different people. He will meet you at the point of the, even if you are, you 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 are a a stammerer. Through the lips of a stammerer, he will speak wisdom in his own way. But in the end, for for us humans, when we are discerning, there was, we'll say, ah, this one looks more refined. That one looks simpler, that looks clearer. So when you read the Old Testament, especially Genesis. And something described that way, that the Lord said, let me go and check what's happening. Don't speak, don't read too much into it in the sense that you think, ah, does that mean that he did? If that is the case, that God doesn't know until he goes and looks, you will find it throughout the Bible. So I don't know if that helps you at all.
Yes, yes, and and you know, so when you, um. Go on the topic of angels, I know you clarified that that. That that the eh the people who went to, the person who spoke to Abraham.
Yes.
In the form of an angel was really an angel or God, you know. So like that one, I think we match there when you talk about angels.
Yes, I I've lined that up. I'll be talking about that particular one when we when we get to angels. But yes, it will become clear to you why one of those three was actually God. One of those three was God, but. And and there were the, one of those three was God, but we will break down that whole, that's in Genesis chapter eighteen, we'll break it down. And it will become clear there was God. Because you will see the attributes of God there. You will see clearly that angels can do this one.
That would be very interesting.
So we will, we will talk, we will talk about that. It's a, it's an exciting topic, that particular one, yeah.
Yeah, and and I'm I'm looking forward to that.
Good, good, good.
That one else will continue.
Okay, okay, let's see who else.
Glass refrat today.
Oh, Glass Refrat is not there, maybe she's been kicked off by Zoom, she'll be back probably. Welcome, Frank, welcome.
Thank you.
How are you? Long time.
Oh, I'm blessed.
Good, good, good. You have anything to share with us today?
Yeah, not really, but for this topic of the Trinity and the order. And that is only in rank that they differ. Yeah, so. It's it's really a debatable topic that I've been hearing about the Trinity, the Trinity, the Trinity. Um, I am my father one. And. Um, the 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 father has a son, I can understand, and the father be one. In which context are they one? Where they become one, they have a particular understanding, they change that makes them one. But in fact, it has really been confusing and, um. When students ask such questions, it's finding difficult explaining to them. But this evening's lecture has really enlightened me about it, but as Irene is saying, we need to really go deeper. Because it's still not clear.
Mm-hmm. It's not yet clear, I agree. It's going to take a few, a few sessions and 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 individual sort of study, going back and just looking in the scriptures.
Would tell you that it's in that. That's i- is there respect at all that I sound will say, I am my father, how can you be equal to your father? It asks a lot of questions that in fact, responding becomes a little bit challenging, but with a cell division, as you said. Um, when a cell device, well, so if. Their three personalities, they undergo some division. Then I think that they possess the same characteristics, the same features. And that has really enlightened me about, um, why they are one, are just one. And I'm here to get more information and when time goes on.
Good, good. Thank you for that. So yes, um, Irene, welcome back. Um, do you want to, do you want to share something with us now? Okay, I'll come to you, Gracie, Reverend.
Oh, thank you, um, and good evening everyone again.
Good evening.
The questions that are coming, beautiful. Let let me add just a little regarding. The concept of the Trinity, uh, this is how it helped me to understand. Um, you know, when I got born again, I also had questions and I still do. This is how I understood it. I am the son of my mom and Tilly Z.
Yes.
But I am the husband of my wife. The same person, different functions. I am an engineer. So in my workplace, they recognize me as an engineer. I go there and function as an engineer. The same person, but not the son of Antalya.
That's right.
Or the husband of Sheila, no. One individual, three distinct functions. The concept of God, the Father and Son is according to function. For God to save mankind, he has to come as the man, Jesus. For God to indwell all of us, he has to come as the Holy Ghost, the same God, but different functions. So let us not reason it as if, um, it's three individuals. Um, like you said, then it becomes three gods. No, it is the concept of salvation. In fact, the only place God is manifested as the Trinity has to do with salvation. In the Old Testament, he says, behold, Israel, your God is one. So it is in the concept of salvation that God manifests as the sun, manifests as the Holy Ghost, and is still God. You are, just like the Bible says, we spirit, soul and body.
Yeah.
You are one individual.
Yes.
You are a person, but the composition of you is spirit, soul and body. And at every point in time, one aspect of you manifests.
Yep.
If you are hungry, it is not your spirit who is hungry, it's your body. If you are studying, it's your soul, your intellect. If you are praying, it's your spirit, man. Does it mean you are three different individuals? No, but it's according to function. So let us not, um. I don't know where to use, but it is one God functioning differently. As to where the demand is. I hope that helps. Thank you.
So as the second part of what you said, I think I probably identify with that more. So. The, um, the idea that, um. Without likening it to the spirit, soul and body. I feel like that that ministers to me because God made us in his image and as he is made up of three persons in one. So also we are made up of three parts and and I like the analogy of that when you are studying. Your body is not really, you know, it's it's your mind that is taking it, you know, or if like your soul that is taking all that information and is the active part. At salvation, it was your spirit that was ignited. And yet you, your mouth, your soul went and proclaimed somewhere, I'm saved. Meanwhile, the salvation actually happened in your spirit. Your soul is not, sorry. Okay, your soul is not saved in the same way that your spirit is saved. Your soul is being saved through the renewal. But your spirit has been converted already. Is an is an is 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 a new creation. And yet you open your mouth and say, I am saved, speaking on behalf of the whole being. Okay, so I I did, I identify with that very much because that's, that's how it is. So the sun comes out and says, I am before Abraham, I am. And the the Jews there, they understood it perfectly, they pick up the stones, ready to stone him. Why? Because he was, he was essentially saying he was the Yahweh of the Old Testament. And they were like, what? You? No way. From Galilee on top of it, were ready to stone him to death. Because he said, I am. But it's a son of the Trinity. Now again, here, I will use the word person, you know, someone else might prefer a different word. But the the concept I am, I am familiar with is three persons by one being. Three persons by one being. Or like with human beings, three parts by one per, one, one person, one being. So God, because he is spirit. The analogy between man and and God will at some point fall apart. Because at the end of the day. Because at the end of the day, I have a clear definition. I have a beginning and I have an end. Whereas with God, there's no beginning or end. So straight away, you'll see that there will be a problem when I'm trying to do a comparison between spirit, soul and body and Father, Son and Spirit. God is such that his who could be likened to say his body can come as the person. His spirit that can be likened to your spirit can come as the person, whereas my soul can't get out of this body to go and represent me somewhere. Neither can my body go, go and represent without a soul. All three need to work together within the confines of the body. Whereas God doesn't have the body. So he is not limited in the same way that I am limited. Does that make sense? I know you were trying to say something, Kizzy.
It's a fair amount what you said, I mean, what you were, yeah, just a fair many, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Good. Okay, I think we are going to finish here. So thank you all and God bless you. We'll continue with the same topic by God's grace next week. Uh, we'll try and finish, it will probably get to talk about God's name and there's another powerful you know, message in God's name, understanding God's name. And maybe that might lead us to talk about, you know, angels and yeah, the, there's a very interesting thing to be, you know, to, to be explored under the, the subject of angels and the angel of the Lord. So God bless you all and we'll see you again by God's grace next week.